Sorry, I have to lean to the side. Let's bring the Hamilton County Council January 4th meeting. Madam Audger, if I could get a roll call?
Yeah, Ken Alexander.
Present.
Brad Beaver.
Here.
Amy Masalomani.
Present.
Sue Mackey.
Present.
Steve Nation.
Here.
Tim Griffin.
Here.
Mark Hall.
Here.
Mr. President, you have a form.
If you could, please advise for the invocation and pledge. Dear Lord, thank you for the time that we have today. Thank you for the new year that we look for health and wellness in the years to come. May you provide us with the strength and courage to do the right thing and serve Hamilton County as best we can. In your name we pray.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, well, in the presence of, without a president here today, I'm acting as vice president. Our first order of business is the selection of the 2023 council president, followed by vice president.
I'll make a motion for the council president to be Ken Alexander.
All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Thank you very much, looking forward to it. Do we have a nomination for the vice president?
All motion for Amy Masalomani to be vice president.
Second.
All is in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
All right. Moving on, we have any public comments? Anyone has comments before? Seeing none, we'll move on. Committee and officer reports. President, I have nothing today.
I do not have anything, sir, for vice president.
Highway.
We did not meet, but there is a resolution on the agenda later on.
Finance.
Finance, I would recommend you all read the minutes to the finance meeting we had. It was kind of extensive. We talked over and are doing more research on the pins and changes for the sheriff. And the encapsulate the whole thing is we have the capability of either paying cash or doing a bond for $5 million to cover us on 191st Street. And other than that, we're going to sit tight until the legislating session is over so we know what impact any possible property tax changes may have to us. At that point, we will enter. I think we should have a meeting with the commissioners in the meantime, but we don't. It would be our recommendation not to commit to anything until we know.
That was Reuters' recommendation as well.
Yeah, but if you read it, it'll go into detail on who, what, and why, but that's the long and the short of it. But if we do need to do something with 191st, we have that capability in cash and do a
reimbursement reservation.
Reimbursement if we needed to, so we could go either there if that comes up before the legislating session is over. That's the long and short of it. Do read this, there's a lot of good information.
Thank you.
That's it.
All right, personnel.
We did not meet, but we had a poll, and there are quite a few items on our agenda this evening.
Ms. Lanias.
Mr. President, I'd like to go ahead and move to have our affirmative votes cast on December 29, 2022 concerning the meeting to approve encumbrances to be reaffirmed.
Second.
All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Now, that was put it on the agenda, now we have to vote for it, correct? All right, do I have a motion to?
Well, his, does it need to go on the agenda? His motion was to affirm.
Well, I know, but that was to put it on the agenda, now we have to approve it, to my understanding.
Yes.
Say that again.
I would ask that we affirm the votes cast on December 29, 2022 at our meeting to approve encumbrances.
Second.
All those signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion passed. I promise I won't make you say that again. All right, on to number seven, unfinished business. Was there any other Ms. Lanias? I'm sorry. Seeing none, all right. Unfinished business, council procedural rules.
I'll make a motion that we approve and adopt the Hamilton County Council procedural rules as written and provided.
Second.
Okay, so we're open for discussion. I'd like to make one modification, if you don't mind.
What?
The item number six that we, item number six that we just affirmed that is according to state statute.
So just add that language in there.
And that has to do with the open door laws.
Second.
We already have a motion, so basically my motion includes the adjustment that Ken is asking for.
That would be a friendly amendment.
I'm amending it as such, so I'm back to that.
Second.
Are there any other?
Any other comments?
If we could, I would like to amend Rule 1C9, the second sentence, to include the language that I provided. I think, maybe I did not provide it through full counsel. It's just what it does, it eliminates the last sentence, and it says, "Appointments for public positions that expire on various dates throughout the year are to be made in the month prior to their expiration. The vice president shall provide the council with possible appointee information by the 15th of the month prior to the presentation to the council for consideration. The vice president, if at all, may also provide the public with information concerning possible appointment opportunities."
Basically, it's December or the?
It's the same, it's just worded, it's the same intent, it's just worded differently, so it doesn't.
It's a lawyer.
That is true.
You're gonna have to give that up, Steve, you're gonna have to give that up. Your prior life is past.
I would say, Steve, I would 100% add that to my motion of my friendly amendment. If you would like to type that into the.
Who is, let's vote.
All those, okay, so no more comments, thank goodness. So as amended twice, all those in February signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All right.
Okay, who's in charge of typing this up and making everybody a copy?
I gave the last copy, and I relinquished my further.
Steve, you'll handle that, won't you?
I'll work with Chris.
And everybody will get a copy of the rules we're operating by?
That were amended.
Okay. Now, on paper.
Yes, sir.
All right, moving on.
Out in the cloud.
There's been more emails with this procedures than anything else so far.
I would agree, so we are done.
All right, moving on, board and committee appointments. We have, we have a couple today, a couple that are public, and then the rest are council appointments.
Mr. President, I'd like to nominate for the Economic Development Board of Fishers, Jamie Nevis. Okay, do all three, then for Hamilton County, Jim Guinball, and for the city of Westfield, Joe Plankis.
Second.
Any discussion? All those signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion passed. All right, moving on to internal committees and assignments.
Mr. President, I would like to make a motion for liaison assignments to reflect as such with aviation for Brad Beaver, council parliamentarian for Steve Nation, emergency management advisory council for Tim Griffin, extension service Sue Mackey, insurance board Mark Hall, ISS, IAS, and web for myself, Amy Masalomani, tourism board for Ken Alexander, and assessor trustees for Brad Beaver.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All right, motion passed. Now, do we need to?
We'll move on to the committee.
Okay, well, I don't think we did any of our internal ones at the end of December.
Oh, that's right, okay. So then, Mr. President, I will make a motion for council appointments to be county plan commission, one-year term for Brad Beaver, Hamilton County Solid Waste District, one-year term for Brad Beaver, Hamilton County Redevelopment Commission Board, one-year term for Brad Beaver, and Hamilton County Economic Development Court, Sue Mackey.
Sure you don't want to brag?
I don't even know what it does.
Well, you could find out.
I'm full.
It's good.
I'm full.
Any other discussion? Do we have a second?
I would say most of that, most of that has to do with my proximity to the courthouse.
Yes.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any other discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. All right, moving on.
Mr. President, the committee assignments. For the sheriff committee, I'd make a motion for Tim Griffin, Sue Mackey, and Steve Nation.
Do them all.
You want me to do them all? Okay, fine, so that was sheriff. We'll move on to finance and budget, which will include Brad Beaver, Amy Masalomani, Ken Alexander. Highway Bridge Committee will be Mark Hall, Sue Mackey, Ken Alexander. Personnel and Management, Mark Hall, Tim Griffin, Sue Mackey. County Business Plan Committee, Mark Hall, Amy Masalomani, Ken Alexander. The ARPA Committee will include Steve Nation. The nonprofit committee will include Tim Griffin, Sue Mackey, and Amy Masalomani. And there are no changes to the Domestic Violence Shelter Study Committee nor the RFP review team.
Are those finished, the last two?
They are not, we have not started.
And who's on them?
I'm sorry, on the Domestic Violence Shelter Study Committee, it will include the RFI review team, that would be Ken Alexander, and then the RFP review team is Steve Nation and myself.
Okay.
Do we need to add a second to the RFI?
We do not.
As I understand, there was one responder, so it's reviewing one response. But that'll help us develop the response and then look at the development of the RFP that will then be reviewed by the other committee. And they're just members of a committee of larger group.
That's fine. Is that a motion?
That is my entire motion.
Any discussion?
I would say, Ken, are you back on highway?
I am.
Okay, that's good enough. I would just say highway and finance are both high-dollar committees, so pay attention.
All right, with that, obviously, we have a motion and a second, seeing no other discussion. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? All right, motion passed. All right, moving on. Good tabled business, I will remain tabled. New business, do I have a motion to approve the vendor claims?
Set moved.
Second.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion passed. Vicentinal Commission, Brenda Myers, if you mind coming forward? And bring anyone with you that you'd like.
Thank you. I'm gonna pass something down if I have to.
Please do.
The real brains behind this operation is Jessica Layman, who has been our coordinator. This is her, she just completed her second year, and she has done a phenomenal job. We are going to have an amazing celebration, it's hard to believe that the year is here. We kicked that off on January 22nd with a performance at the Center for the Performing Arts. We've given away 700 tickets, right, Jessica?
A little over 700.
A little over 700. So we do have the IBC set aside for the councils, so if you've not booked those yet, you need to give those names to Jessica. But I want to thank you for your financial contributions last year and this year, which we've matched. I think it's really made a difference, and the book in front of you is one of the products, which is selling like hotcakes, by the way. So Jessica is gonna give you the real news, but thank you for your support, it's gonna be a great year.
Thank you very much, Brenda. So thank you guys for seeing us today, really excited to give you this update. The paper that you have in front of you basically just outlines all the things that we've done during 2022 and then what's gonna happen in 2023, and kind of as relates to the money that you've been spending and exactly what Brenda was talking about, what's been going on. So I won't go through everything in super detail, but if you have questions, absolutely feel free to let me know, and then I hope you guys enjoy your books, because it was a labor of love, and we're really excited about it. So our book is available for general public purchase. We had a 1,000-book print run. In our pre-order period, we sold 465, and we are definitely over that number at this point. It came out officially for public purchase at the beginning of December, so we're doing really well on that. During 2022, we had a QR code-based trivia game that we partnered with a local group called Gamify That, and we had 16 events, farmers' markets, festivals, anywhere and everywhere you can think of across the county. And so we had 16 events where over 1,000 people scanned our trivia boards to potentially win prizes. We also are developing our grant program, where we had applications from 18 historic and cultural institutions like parks, libraries, museums. They will, in 2023, will host 23 programs. And then we had general public and general nonprofits from Hamilton County, and we had 11 groups get approved to host 16 programs. So right there, that's, you know, math, almost 30 programs. And then our commission, which was appointed by the township trustees. So there's nine townships, nine representatives, each of them is planning a signature event for each of their townships, and so that's nine events right there. So we're getting pretty high in the event numbers, which we're really excited about. For communications, we've got a website, we have a blog, we have an email newsletter, we have social media, all the things you would expect for an initiative like this. We have three contract workers who do our graphic design, social media, and communications. We also have merchandise, there's a local business market pro is partnering with us to help with merchandise for sale, as well as created that we buy and then distribute. We have hosted a commercial on Hamilton County Television, and we'll do the same next fall during the football season. And we have designed a print calendar that encompasses all the events that we talked about. That's, I sent it into the printer yesterday, or two days ago, so we should have that pretty soon. And several aspects of the book, and of course, we've advertised extensively in print publications as well as on social media. On the back page, we had a team that reviewed all the people who applied for our grant application process for historical accuracy, logistics, make sure that if they're having an event in December, that it's not outdoors, you know, things like that. So they also are in charge of helping develop the content for our traveling exhibit. The Hamilton County Community Foundation funded an initiative to create a traveling exhibit, which will be two foldable panels that will travel to 26 locations over 35 weeks of 2023, and it's gonna talk about all the different parts of our county history, same as the book covers. And it goes to schools, libraries, businesses, lots of different places that may not get hit by other programs that we're doing. This funding that we're using for the community foundation also goes towards a poster exhibit that will go out to everyone who's hosting a program. So we're getting the content in a lot of different ways to a lot of different people in a lot of different places, that's definitely our goal. Our other team has created an online calendar, which mirrors the print calendar, but of course, we expect to have updates over the year, as well as non-grant-funded programs that we'll highlight on our online calendar. They also, this team, this event management team, has also planned our opening and closing events. Brenda mentioned our opening event coming up very soon, we're very excited. And then during the summer, we had a part-time intern that was funded by Hamilton County Tourism very generously in tourism management, and she helped develop a lot of structure and framework for the events that are going to come into fruition this year. So special projects, I attended meetings at local service clubs, organizations, 18 of them through 2022, basically just getting the word out, making sure everyone knows that this is happening and where it's happening and how to get involved. And we definitely had grant applications come through because of that attendance, so that was really important to me. Uh, David Highway, who likely all know, our county historian, was also, has also been very integral to this process. Uh, the high school ambassador program, uh, we are funding a program through the county commissioners individually. Um, we, uh, have selected 21 students from, I think, every single public high school and a couple private high schools here in the county. Um, and are working with the Hamilton County Leadership Academy on our curriculum. Basically, we want these kids to learn about their community and learn about history and also take part in the celebration. So that's that program. Two more things, and then I'm almost done. So the transportation marker program, this was developed by, again, David Highway. Uh, we had a certain capacity for grant applications that we didn't get enough applicants to meet that, um, amount. So we came up with this program to develop a framework for permanent markers for lost transportation routes, including canals, the railroads, bus lines, you name it. Um, and so we're working with the surveyor's office and, as well as a contract worker to do the research for that. Finally, uh, the county, as you well know, uh, approved an extra $25,000, uh, in addition to the match from county tourism to help with the photographer and videographer. Primarily, the goal as a historian is to make sure that 100 years from now, we know what happened during 2023. So we have contracted the photographer to make sure that we know, and it will last for a long time. So we contracted with Daniel Gross. Uh, we are working on a quote from a videographer to round out that, um, pool of money. The last page of your packet is basically just an extremely bare rundown of how many events are happening that we have specifically funded, um, during 2023. Other things will happen, um, but we are really concentrating our marketing dollars and our promotion and support on these events. So you see, there's a pretty good spread across the entire county, which was definitely our goal from day one, is to prioritize every corner of the county, and that's why we went with the township structure as opposed to cities and towns. And the last page that you have that's a single sheet is our 2023 proposed budget. Uh, it was approved by the, by some kind of commission, um, at our December meeting. And basically, it's just an outline. It's an Excel sheet. I've got the same thing in QuickBooks, of course. Um, and there, we're waiting for our reconciled report from December to make this truly 100% accurate. So if you have other questions about the budget in the meantime, of course, I'm happy to answer that. And that was a lot of words to tell you all about what we've been doing.
That was, um, and, uh, I do have one question.
Of course.
As, as we have, um, uh, people in the community that are now all of a sudden realizing it's upon us and want to get involved, how do they, how do they do that?
Yeah, so number one, attend events, of course. Um, number two, we do have a page on our website where you can fill out a form. It's a volunteer page, and we will be contacting those people to help with, uh, logistics during these different events. That was one of the things we really wanted to offer to nonprofits in the community is that if you need help, we'll bring people who will help with parking or ticket taking or whatever it is. So, um, I would definitely encourage the volunteer page as a good resource as well.
Thank you.
Anything else?
The books are beautiful.
They are.
Good.
Very excited.
Yes, thank you.
We think so too.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, guys.
All right, um, moving on, our next item is, uh, uh, resolution CC 01042023-1A, which is a resolution concerning the purchase of real estate for the 236th Street Cicero Phase II project.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Um, discussion?
Can you give me a little context? It doesn't really talk about, just give the permission to negotiate, correct? It doesn't really say what they're gonna buy?
The process, and Brad, I don't know if you wanna talk about any of this, but the process of, of this is that we, they have to be given the opportunity to, like, uh, of, of, to, uh, negotiate on our behalf. Is that accurate, Brad?
Well, the, with the process generally goes, correct me if I'm wrong, Brad, but it's like, you guys have to pass a resolution showing an interest in the property if it's over $25,000. They then have to get two appraisals, and they can't buy it for any, anything over an average of the two appraisal. Brad, is that right? I think that's right.
Yeah, you have to get through the federal process.
Right.
So you have to get the appraisals and make fair, uh, offers to the property owners. The resolution is necessary for any time that there's a parcel we may be, uh, needing to purchase that may cost over $25,000. If it's under 25, we don't need a resolution. So we do this on every project in, uh, for years.
It does. I was trying to understand if it was a sliver of ground you're trying to buy or if you're buying acres of ground. Is this just a?
Deming.
Yeah, yeah, we won't tell you on that. You don't know that, and we maybe not know that at this point. But since we have an idea of what, what the impacts would be to property and revaluations.
The federal highway process is very, um, uh, it, it's not like the private sector, and, and there, you, we have to kind of pass these resolutions and then do the engineering to find the study and then figure out the size of it, and it's just a elongated process.
Sure. Process.
Thanks, Brad.
Any other comments?
You get another bite at one, I guess.
All right. Do I have a motion? We have a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye?
Aye.
All opposed? Seeing, all right, moving on. Next item, resolution CC 01040, I'm sorry, 042023-2, resolution for Hamilton County Council authorizing transfer of the unused special tax levy funds.
Submove.
Second.
I, I have a question. What in mine, there looks like there's a typo in the amount from the Park District's refund bonds. Mine's, I'm not sure what the exact dollar amount is.
2,840 and 46.
It's missing a zero.
Got it. Thank you.
Yep, anything else? Um, with the, uh, the motion, is it, is the motion amended to include that revised number?
Sure.
Okay. Um, all right, moving on. Um, all those in favor signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Motion passed. All right. This is appropriations, I'm gonna open up the public hearing. We have, uh, 144 amendment from court administration.
Submove for discussion.
Second.
Any discussion?
Yeah, does this stay inside the court administration budget for 2023?
There she is. I thought she was here.
Hi, I'm Delac, I'm the court administrator. Um, I didn't catch your question.
Does this, you want a 144 amendment, if we grant this amendment, does it stay inside that already approved 23 budget?
It does not. Well, I'm gonna make.
So you're, in January, you're asking for an additional appropriation?
We're gonna have to, yeah. Here's, if you want me to get into what happened.
No, not really.
Okay.
So Brad, technically, what, what they're asking for is to amend the 144s. They'll do that. And then normally, you have so much ebb and flow and come and go that in October, we will go back. Don looks at the numbers. They have the departments look at the numbers, and then if there's any additionals needed, then we'll come back to you.
But as it stands right now, that's, they're not, we're not appropriating additional for 2023. It very well could happen as a result.
Okay.
Any other discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Opposed?
I'm opposed.
I'm opposed.
All right, next item, emergency management transfer of $8,000.
Submove.
Second.
All right, do we have any discussion? Who's paying vendors out of the correct budget line items? All right, seeing no discussion, um, all those in favor signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Opposed? All right. Uh, we have another, uh, 144 minute from the prosecutor.
Motion to approve for discussion.
Second.
Discussion?
Does this stay inside the 23 budget?
That had been a question. It does not. Um, and I, the rough estimate I don't have in front of me, and I know Don had provided it, but it was somewhere in the maybe 26 or $27,000 in additional, um, funding. However, I know, what I originally had gone through the information, it did seem kind of, you know, outside of scope, thinking it was gonna be a much larger number. Um, but if you read the justification as to the years of experience of where these people are being brought in from and, and ultimately what it's enabling our new prosecutor to do is to kind of give the meat to his group. So I think it's justified, just that there is an additional cost associated.
What I'd like for him to do is stay inside the 23 budget since we're in January of 23.
But I think in fairness to him, he was not in office until elected as.
He ran for that office.
Well, but I don't think that he could have forced, um, someone else to do his work without being elected in November, and budgets had already been set at that point. That's all.
I understand.
Yeah. So I think i- in fairness, your typical thing is maybe you give him like the six-month period, like you do the honeymoon phases, you do.
I actually told him that personally. We give you a honeymoon in six months, but you stay inside the budget. You don't come in in January and ask for more money.
And I would, I asked that same question. I think Sheena could attest to it. I was very concerned with it as well. I think the justification based on the information provided about these people's education, knowledge, skills, and ability justified the increase. I don't think we need, I don't, let's see, one hundred.
Don't any, I don't, I don't have any questions for you, Sheena.
We don't have anything.
Okay, well, one of the items we had taken off of the agenda tonight, it was equated to almost $10,000, so that's the difference.
Okay, which one was that?
Nate Walker.
And, uh, there were, it was one candidate that is bringing, actually, two candidates that are bringing 26 years of experience, and another is bringing 12.
Right, so the only thing that was relevant at this point is based on that $27,000 number that we had run when we had this discussion prior, is that you're deducting then 95, 46 from that. So therefore, it is roughly $17,000. I think that's all the information. I mean, the information was provided, I mean, as far as substantiates, the knowledge, skills, and ability. So I don't have any more issues there.
What's the root cause, Sheena? Are the classifications just not, not offering enough compensation?
It's people coming to the prosecutor.
Yeah, I understand that, but, you know, the additional funding request, are, are the classifications off?
It's because you're bringing candidates in with experience.
Well, their experience looks great.
And, and so when, when someone leaves a position, that appropriation reverts back to the entry level. And so, uh, there has been a, a lot of changes within the courts and the prosecutor's office with the change in an election. And so, uh, when, when we're looking at that across the county in general, you're, you're gonna have, it depends upon when you look at the budget, because if you look at it before everyone left, it's much higher, but when it reverts back, and if they don't sell those positions for a while, then they ask for the additional, it looks as if there's more money being requested.
It, it's been pretty, when you have turnover as well, we've, we've been struggling getting new people in, and, and just to compete with the private sector opportunities and other, other municipalities, we've, we've had to do this on a lot of different roles.
Oh, certainly. Understanding it reverts back to the entry level was.
Wait a minute. The thing, what, what you just said was, when that, when that position becomes empty, but when the budget was approved, the position wasn't empty.
I'm not sure how many positions were vacant at that time.
So I think if you look at it, if you even just look at it, though, from who would have been in that position and then left, there is a, a difference in the experience overall, right? So if they were at a basic level four versus bringing in somebody who has maybe 10 years plus. Right, so, but, so it's justifiable based on the knowledge you're bringing in. I'm not, I, again, I think at this point, without knowing specifically who left in which role, that the end of the day, these specific roles minus the one that was originally communicated equates in a $17,000 increase to be approved.
Is there any other discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Opposed?
I'm opposed.
Thank you.
I have a sheriff.
Sheriff, 144 minute.
144 minute didn't make my packet.
Oh, it's, um, has to do with the control room operator position. It's basically ju, it's an open and they wanna reclassify. It's the same, still pull eye. Motion to approve.
Second.
With that explanation, is there any other discussion?
Yeah. Stay inside the budget, Sheriff?
It is. It's the exact sample.
That's the right answer.
It's just a different, I love you, Brad.
All right, um, any other discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye?
Aye.
All right, opposed? Okay. Um, closing the public hearing. Um, announcements?
No foreign greens.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry, thank, thank you. I haven't closed the, reopening the public hearing. All right, moving on.
Mr. President, I'd like to make a motion to combine grant appropriation and transfer reductions 1 through 4 for approval.
Second.
Um, any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Mr. President, I'll make a motion for approval for 1 through 4.
Second.
Discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Now I'm closing the public hearing. All right, announcement, sheriff.
All right, I don't have anything. Thank you.
Counsel attorney.
Nothing for me, thank you.
Madam auditor.
Just welcome to, uh, my new councilors. Um, we're here if you need us, and, uh, the 2022 audit has started, so.
Uh, Ken, I have something. I would like for the council to invite all of our appointments to next month's meeting.
Did you want me, since I'm in charge of all the appointments, to read out to them? That's not in the rules. That is not in the rules.
Everybody that we point, plan commission, BZA, library board, I'd like to see them.
Well, I, I think that, that's a possible, I mean, I think that's something we can ask for.
I'm not saying they have to give a speech, just hello. This, here is our appointment to this board. Here is our appointment, and if we have a few words we wanna say to them. A lot of the appointments, I've never met these people.
Well, it, and, and actually, in the, um, in the, uh, uh, application, we, we stayed in there that, that we were gonna call upon them time from time to come in front of council.
Whether, whether February is the right month or not, I'm just saying, the first quarter of the year is our slowest time. We don't have, we can't do additional appropriate, you know, we haven't, our budget hadn't been approved from the state. Might be the right time to.
So if we do have, I don't know if we have a collection of email addresses for each individual appointee, but, right. So what I'll do is, is I can email all of them together and ultimately make the request that they come to our February meeting. I think at that point, then we can establish that we do, you know, want them to give us a, or an overview if there's things that come about, right, setting the expectation. So I can do that for us and, and then report back. And if certain people can't make it, then we'll use March as a backup.
Right.
Does that work?
Yeah.
Lucky me.
All right, any other items not on the agenda that someone would like to bring up?
Just wanna thank Sue for organizing dozens and dozens of meetings to break in the two new rookies.
Yes, thank you.
I would second that, thank you.
My pleasure.
Thank you to all the department heads who met with us and took time out of their day, so greatly appreciated.
Glad you guys are on council.
With that, I will, uh, close the meeting. Thank you very much. See you in February. Oh, just had to check it.
Okay, cool. See you.